All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the October 2020 Work Session Monroe County Council. Welcome, everybody. It's October 27th, 5:31 PM. We're called Order. And we'll do a roll call vote of council members that are present here with us tonight. So if good, please make sure your microphones are not on mute and indicate by voice that you're present when I call your name. Councilmember Deckard.
Here.
Councilmember Hawke. Councilmember Iverson. And he will be joining us a little bit later, I believe. Councilmember McKim.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Wiltz.
Here.
All right, we've got four in present, so we'll move forward with our agenda. And up first is our Health Department.
Counsel, I am making a motion to approve the Health Department's request for new account lines and simultaneously approve additional appropriations and fund 8105-0000 Epidemiology and Lab in the amount of $20,000 in the Supplies category and $8,000 in the Services category for a total appropriation of $100,000.
Second.
All right, welcome, Ms. Cottle.
Evening. Thank you very much for hearing this. I do have a slight change, so I apologize for that. When I submitted this, we had received the grant notice, the award notice, listing two separate CFDA numbers, which prompted us to put this in with a fund for each one of those. And when I was finishing it up, I asked them for confirmation that the money was evenly split. Because when the grant was fully executed, they didn't specify 100,000 or what from each fund. And then they told us that all 200,000 should actually come from the second fund that we did, which is the 8908. So I would respectfully ask you to not bother with this fund and put the whole 200,000 in the next one, if you can do that.
I can certainly do that with the same distribution percentage wise. Okay. Fantastic. So I withdraw my motion. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the Health Department's request for new account lines and simultaneous additional appropriations and fund 8908-0000 COVID Health Cares in the amount of $40,000 in the Supplies category and $160,000 in the Services category for a total appropriation of $200,000.
Second.
Great. This is the funding. You've heard us talk about this, about the new community testing site that will be coming. We had hoped that that would be open by the end of this month, but there is a delay in getting the ramp built. So it will be open by the middle of November, and we're working to see if we can make that happen sooner rather than later. But we have been told it will be up by the middle of November. We certainly want an accessible site to all, so that's a very important step that we don't want to skip on. And this is the grant portion. The state will also provide test kits and courier services and lab services. So this is the cash portion, which will really go mostly to paying staff, and we will be using a staffing company. But we know that we'll also have some supply needs as well. So that's the split at the moment. Once we get into 2021, we may come back and want to put more of that into the services to cover staffing needs. As you know, we have an agreement with IU Health. They've been very gracious to give us an excellent lease on the facility. Indiana University and the City of Bloomington are also contributing to this, as well as the commissioners. And I want to say that the commissioners were just very, very supportive of making sure that this happened. So I want to thank all of the partners for coming together and supporting this and ask for your appropriations.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Cottle. We'll check with council now and see if there's any discussion or questions on the request. Who would like to go first? Ms. Wiltz, yes?
Yes, playing the role of Counselor Iverson, I would like to ask you, Penny, if for the public, you could let us know the location and who will be able to be tested?
Okay, the location, I believe it's 640 Morton. We will be, once we have the opening date and all the registration details, we will get all of that out there. I know that it's been out already, but we will definitely be sharing all those fine details. It is open to anyone. It is free. And you do not have to have symptoms, so it will be open to anyone. Of course, we encourage people that certainly anyone with symptoms needs to be tested. Anyone who is a close contact or feels like they may have put themselves at risk, you know, maybe after the fact they left an event or a gathering and said, wow, maybe that wasn't as safe as I thought it was going to be, then they may, they may in fact want to wait a few days. Typically, if someone does not have symptoms, most often it's in that five to seven day range when they may develop them. So if you were in an event and you didn't develop symptoms, I would recommend waiting five to seven days before I took a test. Certainly, if you develop symptoms, you want to take it sooner than that.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Comments on the request from Ms. Cottle? All right, seeing none, is there any public comment on this request? Seeing no public comment, we will have a roll call vote, please.
Motion to approve new account lines and additional appropriations and find 8908-0000. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I believe, so now we, are we moving on to item C now?
Yes.
Okay.
From my perspective, yes, anyway. Thank you all. We had this scheduled some time ago. I think actually it was like March or April that we originally had this planned. And, you know, COVID has changed everything for everybody, I think. So thank you for allowing us to come tonight. And I want to thank John with Bloomington Health Foundation and Lucy with the city for coming and joining tonight. Now, you've heard me talk about helping Bloomington Monroe, and at first you heard me talk about Aunt Bertha. But we've grown since then and expanded. But every, every time that we do a health assessment, and even without those assessments, when we are in committee meetings, talking about how do we serve as a community, the residents here, and how do we meet their needs, access to services continually comes up as a barrier. And it can take many forms. Sometimes when we talk about access to care, people think medical care, and it certainly can be medical care, but there are other types of services, whether it's food or shelter, transportation needs, family planning services, whatever it may be. But access is also not about, always about how many doctors are available in a community, but it is how do I get to those services? What do those, does that office take the insurance I have? All those different aspects. And so over the years, we have talked about and dreamed about sort of a one stop shop. Where can people find information about the services in the community so that they can link to them? They can find them easily. They can feel empowered to use those services to the fullest and that they know it's available. So with the last assessment that we did, Bloomington Health Foundation has been a great partner in all of these community health assessments and in our committees and looking for ways to serve the community. And so they heard the need, and they didn't just hear it. They also went out and they found an opportunity and brought it back to us for a collaboration in the community and have launched, really spearheaded the launch of Helping Bloomington Monroe. So John's going to tell you a little bit more about that, John Bertha from Bloomington Health Foundation. And then Lucy's going to do a quick demo for you and for the community. So that site is up and running, and we're happy to have it here. And I would say this time, we're in a time where those services are probably more needed than ever. John, I will kick it over to you.
Thanks so much, Penny. It's good to see you. Thank you to everybody here for allowing us to be here today. It's obviously an honor and a privilege to be here, and thank you for all that you do to support our community. If it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and share my screen. We have a little bit of a presentation that will walk through here with folks. So as Penny said, one of the persistent barriers to our community has simply been people not knowing where to turn to for help. It's a pretty simple issue. When you really get down to it, it's someone saying, hey, I need this service, and I don't even know where to go. The phone book, I don't know who to Google. I don't know who to call. I don't know anybody that works there. And so which programs am I eligible for? Do they serve my geographic area? How do I contact them? And so, you know, we've all spent time, I think, in organizations that are trying to curate directories, spreadsheets, binders. And the challenge with that, as we all know, is that the minute we might curate and collect a list of services, well, number one, the minute that we do that, it's outdated. The information has changed, and whatever we have as a static report is no longer relevant. And then obviously, it's just very costly. It's a very costly, timely process. And so we went on kind of a search for a different solution. And this, this solution came to us from Dr. Lee McKinley, who many of you may know in our community. Lee had, Dr. McKinley had heard about this at a conference he was at. And he introduced us to a company headquartered in Austin, Texas called Aunt Bertha. That's a wonderfully creative name. Just as an aside, the initial reason for Aunt Bertha was supposed to be Aunt Bertha picks up or Uncle Sam leaves off. So I thought that was kind of a fun, fun play on words there. But interestingly, Aunt Bertha headquartered in Austin, Texas, is founded by an Indiana University alumnus, a gentleman by the name of Aaron Gray. And so we're just bold enough to pick up the phone and call and invite them to Bloomington. And so we, we had Aaron Gray and his business development team come to Bloomington, and we hosted a kind of a roundtable presentation on, on what kind of services could be provided by Aunt Bertha, and really what makes their solutions that they offer different. And so what Aunt Bertha does for us is a, is really what I call the secret sauce. And so they have a team of real humans who do look at listings, and they are actively curating those listings. They're actively updating these listings. They're reaching out to programs. They're updating web addresses. So they do this in a couple of different ways. So they have some technology that they deploy there. They have humans that are picking up the phone and calling Bloomington Meals on Wheels to get the updated web address for the phone number. Customers, people can, can go in and actively claim their listing, put their new information in. And then as a user, you can go in and suggest changes. Hey, I just went to the Red Cross. Their new address is this, or they are only open on every other Friday from until noon, or whatever it might be. And then they have a process where they verify programs. And then they again have people who go in and every six months, every six months, they are validating the listings in their database that they have. And they're adding hundreds of programs every day. And so Lucy Shake is going to give us a demonstration. But just to know, this was a community effort. Penny was part of our advisory team from the beginning, and some of the others listed there as well, from, from the city and IU Health and Centerstone as well, joined us in kind of deciding, okay, is this a tool that can serve our community? And if so, how can we do that? So now I'm going to stop sharing this and pass it over to Lucy, who will do just a brief demonstration of this, of this service, and can show you really the power, the powerful nature of this tool. Lucy?
Hi, there's my shared screen. Hi, everybody. I'm Lucy Shake. I'm the Director of the City of Bloomington Volunteer Network during my day job. And also wear the hat of one of two staff members in the department who are helping to promote the Helping Bloomington Monroe. And I'm going to add another name to it. It is Aunt Bertha. But as of last week, they just promoted themselves to findhelp.org. So there's another one. Maybe a little easier to remember. But I will be showing you through the platform, and I want to give you actually this slide to share. So if you're doing any presentations, or if you have any places where you can share this information, there's a handy little QR code on there that you can use to just connect to Helping Bloomington Monroe directly. Let me get my cursor back over here. So what I'm going to do is just jump right in. If you clicked on that link, Helping Bloomington Monroe, you'll see the little powered by findhelp.com actually up here now. So it's helpingbloomingtonmonroe.findhelp.com. That will be the full listing, but we have that shorter version, so you can go straight to it. The first thing that you see is this little fly-in, and we are able to customize this locally. And this one in particular goes to the Chambers website that has so much of our centralized information about COVID response. So that's probably going to be changing and updating all the time. But the first thing you do when you enter the platform as a seeker, a helper, or provider, is to kind of narrow down your search by geographic area. And of course, findhelp.com and Aunt Bertha are nationwide. But the great thing is we can share all of the nationwide services, but also have our local relationships and local resources on here as well as prioritized. You can do that by zip code. You can do it by area. And these are some of our frequent Monroe County areas that we see being searched for. One other thing that I wanted to show you before going into it is that you can also translate the site into over 100 different languages. And it's pretty impressive. And when we're talking about making ease of access, they're really, they're serious about that. So you can, you know, some of the more fun ones are like, I don't know, like Swahili and things like that. But for real, you can, you know, if you're new to the country and you're looking for free or reduced cost services, you can find them with the comfort of your own language. So if I just go in here and click on Bloomington, that will take me to our next search screen. And this is something that anybody can use. Again, I'm not logged into the system. I'm just a casual browser at this point, and you'll see that 10 major service areas that providers and programs are listed under, with a relatively shallow taxonomy below that, making it easy not to get lost in taxonomy. I don't know if any of you have searched in the advanced search on 211 ever, but it's pretty deep. It's pretty deep taxonomy. This one is pretty approachable. You can also search by zip code again, keyword, or program or provider name. And that's a really handy way to just go right to what you want. You know, if you're, if you're browsing food or housing, you can do that. But I could also just click in here and say, I would like to look for help with paying my utilities. Oops, and if I can type, that would help. I can also see some prompts for what I might be looking for there. And as we expect, City of Bloomington Utilities comes up, which is great. You can sort your, what you've found by relevance, or maybe you're looking for what's closest to you, depending on what you're looking for. So I am searching in the 47401, and maybe the First United Church is just a smidge closer to me, and they do have utilities fund there. One of the other things, before I scroll down into the resources that we found, there is also, in addition to the Human Services taxonomy, there is a Situations taxonomy. So I can narrow my results at any time to see, like, maybe I'm looking specifically for a Veterans program or specifically for something with children. That's a way to narrow down your search in a couple of different ways. Maybe something that's open right now, if I'm looking for maybe hot meals. And then also, if you really want to drill down into income eligibility, this has the ability to add some of those qualifications eligibility standards to the program. But I would like to just show you, because I am talking to you and you are the county, I will go down here to Benton County, Benton, sorry, Township Trustee Emergency Assistance. And the way to show resources and programs here on Helping Bloomington Monroe is on something called a card. So all of these are nice little kind of index cards of resources. What John mentioned, trying to get these up to date in our paper formats, really hard to chase that information. Here it is always as up to date as, as we have it. And to navigate the card, you're going to see the basic about that resource, all of the ways that it's tagged in the search fields, and in the Human Situations taxonomy, what to do if you want to get in contact with them, seeing those open hours immediately. And then more information. And there can be a lot of information. As you know, a Township Trustees Office has a lot of services in the Human Services, and they have them listed here, all the different things that Township Trustees Office can do for you, including where is it? Some of those are hidden out there. If you're new to the community, you're not going to know where those are. And I'll remind you, I'm still not logged in. I'm still maybe a casual browser at the library or borrowing a friend's laptop or something. And if I see that there's something wrong here, like John said, you can go ahead and suggest a change be made. And that will go straight to the Aunt Bertha staff in Austin, Texas. And they will review that, vet it, and update the listing. So that is something that really we can have the hive mind help us keep this as up to date as possible. And who is better at that than the people who utilize the services? The other thing that I can do without logging in is go ahead and share this resource. I can send an email to somebody. Just very quickly say who I am and who I'm sending it to, and what is this? I'll click Send. And you can see how it would come into my email inbox. It's coming from Helping Bloomington Monroe. I sent, this is a separate listing that I sent to myself. I made a message here. If here's some resources for you. And then it will send me the resources in the listing that I shared. I think this is super groovy. You can also text it. So I know a lot of people experiencing homelessness do have a cell phone. So you can give them these resources on the go by just sending it to them via text. And then they have it to follow to that resource. You can also promote it on Facebook as well. So that's all without even logging in, completely anonymous, completely easy. But if I go ahead and want to do a little bit more, like maybe I want to take some notes on this particular item, I can log in. And these notes would be specifically for me. I can rate it myself, like if I'm trying to remember which food pantry I like the most, or if I want to say, definitely talk to Michelle when you go in. She's the nicest one. You know, if I just want to make my own notes, they're completely private to my account. I can also share them if I'm a program manager with my program team, which can be a handy thing, but they are not public. And then this is my favorite feature. When you're signed in, and again, signing in, all you need is a name and an email and a password. You can also sign in using your cell phone. So again, if you're not doing email, but you do have a mobile phone, you can still have an account. You can create folders to curate your own lists of resources. So I've created these folders in the past, and I'm going to add this one to my Township Trustees folder. Click Save. And you say, where did that go? If I go up to my Saved Favorites, it'll take me to my account here, and I see my Township Trustees list has 11 programs in it, which is great, because there are so many things going on there, and maybe I want to share this. Now, Helping Bloomington Monroe, you know, we could not do this with our paper guides. We couldn't rip out this service and that service and give it to the person who comes in to ask about it. But I can curate any kind of list. You can see over here I have reentry services. I have senior resources. And those resources may cross search criteria. So like reentry may be under the work category, under the education category, housing. I mean, everything, right? But you can curate them into lists that you can then share. And in addition, you can, you can share the full list, again, as a link, an email, or you can share with a group. And I love these links for embedding in websites and sharing these in ways that you want to, or sending them to a family or friend. But we all say, you know, this is all the new fangled tech. This is what's, all the people in our office love this. You can still print it. You can print an individual program or resource. You can print a curated list, which is awesome, because sometimes you just want to walk out with that paper, or you want to put it on your fridge so you can remember it, right? So I think these are really, really powerful things, just a way to make your own resource guides. Share them with whoever you need to. And this is available to anybody walking on the street today. You don't have to be a provider staff person. As they say, these are seekers, people looking for help. And that's anybody who can manage the system and share things. And then providers. So those are the actual staff people for these resources and programs. And let me go back to my, I forgot to share with you what it looks like when you actually share. Oops. Oops. A text. Let me go there. This is a text I sent to myself. Yes, showed you the email. Super cool. Someone shared Helping Bloomington Monroe resource with you. There's the phone number you can call. I click on it, and I'm back into a really mobile friendly version of Helping Bloomington Monroe, and I can connect to that resource. So I wanted to share with you a little bit of overview of how it's been going. It's been a kind of a really strange year, as we all know. But we've had a lot of searches going on. Certainly, the top searches, I don't know if you can read this, it's kind of faint. But food and housing and all categories are topping our resource searches, whether it's people looking up those categories or search terms. Food, by far, number one, helping paying for housing. We know that's a real issue when people are out of work. Food pantry is very popular. And then Monroe County, of course, is the most aware of this resource. But as we know, Monroe County has permeable boundaries when it comes to resources. And you can see a little heat map in the middle there. So I would like, what we're going to try to do these coming months here, you know, as we are continuing to support Helping Bloomington Monroe, is to get more people engaged, whether those are seekers, helpers, or providers. And that means for providers to add their program if it's not on here. And we are actively helping and working with Aunt Bertha people to facilitate that. Claim their program, which means they say, this is where I work, kind of like on Yelp. And make sure that it's up to date, and they're able to respond and access more tools. And then get trained. So getting trained on those other tools that I'm not going to show you today, because actually, it's quite deep and quite impressive and free, free for everyone. So these trainings are coming up soon. And the intro to Aunt Bertha is really great for anybody who just wants to do the walkthrough of the Aunt Bertha platform and Helping Bloomington Monroe, being our white label version of that. Nonprofit Tools Workshop on November 10th. That's good for anybody who's a provider interested in how this would serve them. And then we're having a special Housing Organizations Roundtable on the 18th, just to really catch up with making sure that all the people providing housing resources are up to date and feeling comfortable with working with the platform themselves. And you can see there on the right, the in partnership with, those are representatives of the Southern Indiana. And you can see there on the right, the in partnership with, those are representatives of the Southern Indiana Aunt Bertha Collaborative that we are a part of. Um, and yes, those are very big impressive institutions on there. So in addition to um, the Bloomington Health Foundation and the Local Council of Women and the City of Bloomington who have invested in this local platform, Anthem Health has invested statewide, IU Health has invested statewide, IB Tech has invested. Um, and all of the other ones that you see there. So all of those people and their platforms are also working to update all of their resources, providers and programs. And that benefits us and our work benefits them. So I've had a frequent question from our organizations saying, nah, is this another kind of great idea that you guys have, you know, and we put effort into it and then it's gone. Actually, this one's going to be sticking around and we're putting a lot of effort into it. So it becomes the most useful resource for all of these partners. So I encourage everybody to, if you can, um, whoops, that's not it. This one. Um, attend one of those programs and uh you can RSVP using the link that was on that. Slide there and Alicia Baker, our great advocate and community engagement manager for Aunt Bertha in Indiana will be hosting those programs. But if you're interested in having one customized to you, uh, myself and my colleague Marissa Parr Scott in the um Community in Family Resources Department at the city will be um uh hosting those here locally for any group or um staff who are interested in having their questions answered about the Helping Bloomington Monroe platform. And that is all I have.
Thank you so much, Lucy. I, again, I just want to say thanks to Lucy and really everybody on the advisory team. You know, I, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, you know, from a funding standpoint, the Bloomington Health Foundation is funding this in partnership with the Local Council of Women. So when we say this is free, this is completely free to use. There's no advertisements. There's no um information mining or personal information that you have to share to be able to get access to this information. So I'm very, very proud of this initiative and we're hoping that get the word out to as many people as we can. Um, again, we're just trying to reduce barriers for people. So if they, if they're, you know, Lucy showed on one of the screens, we have over 2,000 programs that serve people who live in that 47408 zip code right now. So if you live in our community, you can have access to not just local community uh programs, but but national programs as well and as well as state programs. So um, we're, we're grateful for the opportunity to share this and uh we hope it helps. Happy to answer any questions and, and, and I just always hats off to Penny and her team for their partnership at the Health Department. They've been, they've been great partners in this. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Barata and Ms. Sheik for the terrific presentation and for sharing this wonderful uh new resource with us. Uh, I'm glad we're able to, to get it promoted here to the community. Uh, yeah, let's check and see if there's uh any questions or discussion from members of council. Uh, before you all take off tonight, Mr. Deckard, yeah?
Thank you very much. And it's good to see you on here, Lucy, and it's good to see you also, John and John and Penny. You're the most common voices I hear on my radio and we appreciate that too. Uh, my question is, I think if I understood it correctly, Lucy, the, the users, the seekers can go in and create those folders. I'm extremely curious, how often do you see people get to the seekers get to that folder creating level um and penetration into the system?
Uh, you know, I actually don't have stats on that at this point, but anybody who runs into me is doing it because I get so excited about that, that part of it. Cause what I do in my work is uh resource sharing and to have that kind of um control. And like uh Penny had said earlier, empowering people to um collect and share resources in a way that matters to them. Uh, I think is, is something that is going to be a real highlight of all the training and outreach that we do.
Thank you.
One, one area of this, of another population is, is so um social workers. Folks who work at the, maybe the welfare committee of the local church. So people who are helping to assist people in finding resources. Now they have access to this tool where they can store programs and store, um, you know, my wife works for uh in the pediatrician's office. And they're starting to use this and they can kind of collect pay. So they have a, a family that comes in and they can have this issue. They say, hey, maybe we can refer you to, uh, Dr. McKinley would refer people to, hey, you just had your knee replaced. Hey, you're going to be homebound for a while. Let me get you referred. I can text this right now, Meals on Wheels. Let me text this to you so that you can get enrolled and signed up at Bloomington Meals on Wheels. So it's not just the seeker who can self-guide themselves to resources, but it's, it's providers, it's doctors, it's nurses, it's social workers, it's folks at the library, it's um people at church. So um, it's really helps to facilitate those connections.
And speaking of the library, just I forgot to mention that all of our librarians are trained to help facilitate people navigate the Helping Bloomington Monroe platform, um, as well as staff members at the city. So that's one difference between uh two on one and Helping Bloomington Monroe is, you know, uh, that, that helpline. Um, but we do have real people behind Helping Bloomington Monroe and the tools, like you said, are just amazing in, in the ways that you're empowered to uh seek help and provide.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Ms. Wilts?
Uh, really just wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation and for your patience and waiting months to, to give it apparently because this is fantastic. And I remember working with Penny in the Health Department years ago, talking about how needed this type of of information really was. Um, so I can, I just wrote down a number of people that I want to share this with. So really excited. Thank you.
Mr. Iverson, did you have a follow-up too?
I did. I have a question. Uh, I wanted to thank you all for being here tonight and sharing this resource. Uh, you know, I, I've been seeing this around quite a bit. One of the things that I found most interesting and helpful uh was the uh, the slide that you shared, uh, Lucy, on the food and housing were by and large the, the most searched for terms. And, and I think, you know, as, as you're here before the fiscal body, you know, we don't have legislative powers. We don't have executive powers. We, we have the power of the purse solely. It'd be really interesting. I, I, I mean, I'm curious to know. Uh, you know, how can we can, you know, continue to have this conversation where we can see these search terms, what people are really searching for to get that dialed down data? So that when we're making funding decisions, you know, how do we make sure that those dollars are going to where the need is the greatest?
That's a great, that's a great, uh, you, you, you already three steps ahead of us, Peter. Good to see you, by the way.
Good to see you too, John.
So one of the, one of the prospective opportunities that comes with this is the ability to kind of see those heat maps and to see where people are searching from. And so theoretically, we can look at this and say, hey, we're noticing a lot of people in this zip code are searching for food pantries, but we don't have any food pantries in that part of the county. So maybe there's a gap and there's a needs assessment that we can do to be able to try to, maybe the foundation, maybe we need to partner and fund some new food pantry development in that part of the in part of the county. If we're starting to see these uh emerging kind of needs um around uh the geography of where people are searching from. So there's so much, I mean, I think we're just kind of pushing off from the harbor with this. There's so many different opportunities as we continue to get the word out and we get hopefully more adoption rate and more users really using this, the ability to kind of dig down into the data and trend. See where, see where we have gaps, see what programs are being used, see where, where maybe we have a need to grow programs. So it's a really insightful question. I think there's so much opportunity as we move forward with this.
Yeah, I think one of the ideas that, that we might be working on is, is surfacing this data, of course, so that, you know, we're just getting used to it, like, like you said as well, John. Um, but like you said, if you want to see that data, maybe there's a spot that we can put this so that, you know, you can access that monthly, that monthly change. We're certainly getting reports from Aunt Bertha on our own uh white label instance um quarterly, so we can report those as well.
Great, yeah. Yeah, the, the, the opportunities are exciting. You can see the, how this can progress into something really, really great. It already is. So thank you for being here.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Munson, yes?
Yes, uh, thank you, John and Lucy. This is very exciting. And uh I too, like Kate, was making a list of who I wanted to send this to. And in addition, I thought, well, uh, they can have an introduction to this by just watching uh the county council meeting on CATS and seeing this. But is there, um, are there links to this program on other websites that people know about well, like the Health Department website or uh City of Bloomington website?
We can't, we can't take the uh, the link and so we, we're, that's part of the uh rollout as well. Lucy, maybe you can speak to that a little bit more, but we can share this link and we can put it on different websites. So um, I, I think it's on, Penny, I'm looking at you. Yeah, it's on the Health Department website um already and um you know, I think the United Way has it listed uh on their website.
Oh, good.
You know, the, the idea was to think, okay, well, where are people naturally searching? Where, if someone's going to sit down at a library computer, where, where might they just intuitively look for help? And so the city, United Way, the library, the health department, so there's some natural ones there, but but as far as we're concerned, anybody that wants to put a, a link to our search box, uh, the more the merrier.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, and I just posted to your chat here a link to our um media kit. So you can um can add a signature to your, to your email and, and link that to Helping Bloomington Monroe. Facebook page covers all sorts of things that will help us share it. Uh, just link that to, you know, uh, the image to the link. Um, and uh, hopefully we're just going to try to really blanket the community with this because there's nobody that this isn't going to be useful for.
Thank you.
Okay, any uh, any last questions or comments before we move on to the next item? All right. Well, Mr. Barata, Ms. Sheik, thank you so much for uh joining us tonight. You're always welcome uh here at the county council. So we uh look forward to getting the word out for you and seeing you again soon. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our courts.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for a category transfer in Fund 1000-0225 General Fund Courts in the amount of $20,000 from the Personnel category to the Services category.
Good evening. Um, I'm here tonight asking to transfer the money to Special Services to help cover the costs of mental health evaluations. My Special Services category, besides mental health evals, it also in, does interpreting depositions by public defenders that are outside public defenders and settlement conferences. So far this year, I've already spent $33,240 just in mental health evaluations. And I just started in, with $35,000 beginning of the year in that whole entire category. So the bulk is already taken up with most of my mental health evals. I also know I have four more evals right now tentatively scheduled with two more months to go and each eval averages about $1,200. So I know this is extra money I have in my salaries category from someone basically who's left at the 14-year level and a new hire came in at 1,000. That's an example. That was about $4,000 right there. So I'm asking to transfer that over so I can finish paying out all these invoices that are yet coming in with mental health.
All right, very good. And I don't think that, I think we had a muted second on that. So I'm going to give Mr. McKim an opportunity to.
I did second, but yes, I was muted.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Abraham. Uh, are there any questions uh or comments? Yes, Ms. McKim?
Uh, so can you just um remind us uh wh- under what uh criteria a mental health evaluation would be ordered?
Sure. These are usually in criminal cases. Either the judge has decided that the person, when they appear before them, may not be mentally stable to continue in their court case. Or the defendant's attorney has requested the court to evaluate the defendant for sanity and competency at the time of the offense before we can proceed. Each case requires two doctors to actually do an eval. So every one person that goes gets two evals and at $1,200 each. So we're talking $2,400 for one person. And in the event that we have one doctor saying one recommendation and another doctor doing totally opposite, then we have to have a third eval done to basically break the tie. So sometimes we have three evals for each one defendant.
A- and are those, uh, the, the doctors you refer to, are they, uh, are they all psychiatrists? Are they psychiatrists and psychologists or?
Um, years ago, we had to have one psychiatrist and one psychologist. A couple of years ago, that was switched. So it can now be two psychiatrists or one of each. So that's, the law has changed. We tend to usually like to do still one of each if possible.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Iverson?
Yes, Ms. Abraham, uh, does this request represent at all an increase in the number of evaluations that you're doing?
Yes, I actually was looking at those numbers earlier today and I'm showing in 2018, I had um 11 that we paid evals. Last year in 2019, it went up to 25 evals that we paid for. And already this year I paid for 29 and there's still four more out there that I haven't received the invoices for. And I still have two more months yet that more could still be scheduled. So yes, they've definitely increased.
Do you have any guesses to why you're seeing that type of an increase?
I have no idea.
All right. Worth a shot, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a judge question.
Sure, sure. Well, thank you.
All right, uh, anything else? Other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Wilts?
We're just following along then. Are most of these requested by the judge or?
No, majority of them are by the counsel for the defendant.
Got it. And in, in that case, um, would this be just the public defender's office? Or any, any?
Any attorney can request it.
And it's still uncommon upon uh the court system to pay for it?
Correct.
Good question. Anything else before we turn to public comment? Okay, we'll see if there's any public comment on this request. Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the category transfer from the Personnel category to the Supplies category in Fund 1,000-0225. Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and uh up next here, we have our Assessor's Office.
Counsel, I move to approve the Assessor's request for a category transfer in Fund 1224-0000 Reassessment Fund in the amount of $5,000 from the Services category to the Personnel category.
Second.
All right, welcome, Ms. Sharp.
Thank you, guys. Uh, this is, uh, I don't usually come before you for something like this, but I mentioned during the budget hearings that I have two individuals in the office that are getting their Level 3. Uh, didn't think it would happen this year um for both of them, but with everything that else is going on, um, they have really got into this and it looks like both of them will get their Level 3 before the end of the year. Um, so I just need to transfer some money from my travel and training since we haven't been going anywhere this year. Um, so I had a little bit extra there and we're just transferring the 5,000 into my Level 3 certification. And that will cover uh both of them uh when they get their Level 3. Because when the state says that when a person gets their levels uh 2 or 3, that we have to pay them that year right then for their, for doing it. So that's all I'm asking, 5,000.
Okay, thank you. Any uh, any questions or, yes, uh, Councilmember Hawke?
Uh, that's 5,000 for two people. So the level uh brought it up 2,500 per. Is that correct? Do I understand you correctly?
No, that's just what I need to make them whole, to make my, my balance whole.
We already.
We already have the other money. We've already paid them their two, their Level 2. Now this is for their Level 3.
Right, but it's not a 5,000 per. Right, but it's not a 5,000 per each one.
Yes, it is.
Oh, I thought it was 5,000 for.
The, the Level 3 is a $5,000, um, bump up. Okay, you guys decided that about three years ago. And that's why we don't, I mean, first of all, it's really, really difficult. And, um, so when you get that Level 3, you're considered the top of the whole pyramid in the assessors. So, um, but we already had funds in there, but we don't have enough to cover two more people getting, getting. So this will make us whole in that and we won't, we'll be okay.
So everybody can be covered. Okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
Uh, any, uh, any other questions on the request? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the category transfer from the Supplies category to the Personnel category in Fund 1224-0000, Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And next up is our Prosecutor's Office.
Wiltz, hello, that's me. Hello, let's see. Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for additional appropriations in Fund 8121-9622 Voca Grant in the amount of $129,543.31 in the Personnel category, $3,450 in the Services category for a total appropriation of $132,993.31.
Second.
All right, welcome, Ms. Hamlin. Good to see you again.
Good to see you all. I hope everybody's well. Uh, this is a request to appropriate our Voca grant funding. This is for a two-year grant cycle beginning 10/1 of '20, rolling through 9/30 of '22. It's to fund four, in part, it funds four positions in our, uh, Victim Assistance, Assistance, um, Program. We have, we received additional funding for the, the fourth position in this grant and you all approved it to start January 1st. So we'll hire a new person in that fourth position, January 1st. And it's got a little training money in there as well.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions, uh, or discussion on the request? I think we're going to make this easy. Honor, uh, any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve new account lines and additional appropriations in Fund 8121-9622, Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, and, uh, up next here, we have, uh, the Monroe Final Validation Report. And, uh, this was something that, uh, again, we would, we kind of postponed a, a presentation on this for the last couple of months, uh, as we were dealing with budgets. Now we're through all of that and we're able to have, uh, our representatives from probation and the courts here. And I know, uh, Mr. Iverson has some additional information he'd like to, uh, provide here too. Before we get started, feel free, uh, Counselor Iverson.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Spoonmore. I, I wanted to quickly introduce this section of our agenda because I, I think it's really important that we as decision makers, uh, have access to evidence-based research. And I think this, the study that we're, we're looking at tonight, it has a lot of rigor. It has partnership with scholars at Indiana University and it's got a high level of scholarship and it's just really attractive. Uh, this, this presentation or, or rendition of it, uh, was given in a webinar, uh, by the, held, uh, those promoted by the Wayne State School of Social Work Center for Behavioral Health and Justice. And Mr. Hatfield, uh, gave a presentation in which he commented in that presentation that he thought it was important that elected officials should not be brought in at the last minute of projects, but rather that bodies such as the council, uh, should be updated regularly, uh, for the purpose of strengthening partnerships. And so, uh, I think it was really great that we have brought this here tonight, just in an effort to do that to strengthen partnerships. So without being any more long-winded, I'll, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Hatfield to take it over here.
Well, uh, thank you very much, Counselor Iverson. I really appreciate the invitation, uh, to, uh, inform you about, uh, in the council about our, our efforts in the pre-trial reform efforts here in Monroe County. Um, with me, I've also got Presiding Judge Mary Ellen DeKoff, who has been our champion from the beginning, um, of moving us forward with our pre-trial reform efforts, as well as Dr. Evan Louder. Um, she, uh, is responsible for, uh, all of the research that you're going to see tonight. And, uh, she'll explain a lot of, uh, what we were able to do, what we were able to accomplish. So, uh, just a real quick background about pre-trial reform in Indiana. As far as, uh, pre-trial goes, with our risk assessment tool, which is, is kind of the focus tonight, that was adopted by the, uh, by Indiana back in 2010. So it's been 10 years, uh, since we've been using this tool, um, at, at various, uh, times. But more so when, when our pilot project really, uh, got off the ground in 2016. A couple of other kind of big things happened in Indiana to kind of move pre-trial reform on the front burner is in, uh, 2013, uh, then Indiana Chief Justice Brent, Brent Dixon formed a committee to kind of study evidence-based pre-trial release reform. And, uh, it had a, a group of individuals from across the state of Indiana, across all disciplines, uh, in the criminal justice realm, uh, to really work on this issue. Another major factor that happened is in 2014, um, Indiana joined, uh, with, uh, with the Evidence-Based Decision Making Initiative that was sponsored by the National Institute of Corrections. And what that is, is basically an initiative that looks at, um, uh, criminal justice decision-making based on the evidence that's there, uh, in terms of both kind of global evidence on, uh, best practices and things to do, but really, um, a lot of the information that you collect at the local level to help inform your practices, um, and move forward in a positive direction. So one of the decision points that that EBDM initiative really focused on was pre-trial reform. So the committee that Justice Dixon was working on, um, kind of merged into that EBDM project and, uh, started really looking at pre-trial reform. And in 2016, there were 11 counties that were selected to pilot, um, pre-trial reform efforts. Monroe County was one of them fortunately, and we were provided a lot of technical assistance from the National Institute of Corrections to get our project off the ground. There are three main goals of pre-trial reform that we focus on. Those are maximizing the release of pre-trial defendants, um, maximizing sa- safety and maximizing court appearance. So in keeping those three things in mind, we really worked to set up our local system on how we were going to do things. Uh, we started with a local stakeholder team and group and it was chaired by Judge DeKoff. She got us going and got us moving in the right direction. We, uh, during those initial efforts, we, uh, really went through and did a lot of development of our policies and procedures. We looked at a lot of our local data to inform and develop those practices that we wanted to, um, focus on in terms of our pre-trial reform efforts. And we began our pilot, um, on October 1st, 2016. So we've been at it for four years. Um, and I'll show you some, uh, and we'll, you know, give you a lot of evidence on, on how well we're doing tonight. Um, the other thing I wanted to make note is that, uh, our program, our local pre-trial reform efforts were recognized by Chief Justice Loretta Rush in her State of the Judiciary address in 2019. Where Judge DeKoff, as well as, uh, Prosecutor Alphonse and, um, uh, our, uh, Pre-Trial Division Supervisor at that time, Becca Stright, were invited up to the State of the Judiciary address to be recognized for our efforts. Um, a couple of things that you probably want to know as a council is how we staff and fund, uh, these efforts. We have a staff that focuses on pre-trial in the probation department, um, of six people. We have a supervisor and three case managers, as well as one pre-trial assessor there. Funded by Department of Correction Grants, uh, a Department of Correction Grant, um, and some user fees in combination. And then we also receive a grant from the Indiana Office of Court Services to fund another pre-trial assessor and to fund a public defender, um, to help us. So that a public defender is at the initial hearing, um, and the initial appearance for all defendants, where, uh, liberty is at stake really, where, uh, they might be in custody and, um, and there's discussions about, uh, that custody status. Some, uh, basic stats for those past four years, over the past four years, we have assessed over 8,000 pre-trial defendants. You can kind of see where they lie in terms of their risk levels based on that risk assessment instrument. We have, uh, in Monroe County, an overall appearance rate of about 93%, meaning that of all the hearings a pre-trial defendant has during their pre-trial period, of, of all those hearings in the past four years, they have been attended or, uh, defendants have appeared 93% of the time. In terms of a safety rate, and what I mean by that is, uh, not having any new arrests during the pre-trial period, you'll see that our, uh, our overall kind of safety rate is 79%, but our, our low-risk defendants, um, appear for court 96% of the time and, uh, 91% of the time are never rearrested, uh, for any new offenses during that pre-trial, um, period of time. And then you also look at the, we, uh, one of the other metrics we follow quite closely locally is our overall detainee length of stay. And you can kind of see how that falls in terms of the length of stay and days, uh, in jail. Now, some of those numbers might seem a little bit high and, uh, there are some more extremes that throw those numbers off a little bit, that kind of increase those, those rates. The also, the other thing that you have to think about is, um, a lot of times weekends and holidays, uh, factor into, into those numbers as well. So one of the big things we're going to talk about tonight is the IRAS, uh, the, uh, Indiana Risk Assessment System Pre-Trial Assessment Tool, and we call it the IRAS PAT. It's based on the Ohio Risk Assessment System, um, and the set of tools that they use there. It was, um, uh, created by the University of Cincinnati specifically for Indiana, the IRAS PAT and the other tools associated with the risk assessments that we use. But the PAT, um, measures kind of in seven, uh, uh, seven different, uh, four, I'm sorry, four domains and seven items across four domains. That's what I meant to say. And there's some questions about criminal history, employment, residential stability and substance use. They're just kind of giving you an idea of the things that we are asking about and assessing during that pre-trial period or after that initial, uh, arrest and booking into jail. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Evan Louder. And she's going to talk about, uh, the different research projects that we've been working on, not only in the state, but here in Monroe County.
Thanks, Troy. I'm going to share my screen so that I can, uh, do the slide transition, if that's okay. Everybody see this? Okay, awesome. Well, I'm delighted to be here today. I've been working with, um, Troy for, you know, the better part of the past three years on all these research projects. And it's great to kind of bring, you know, this, this evidence base that we're accumulating back to the community. So I'm going to talk about kind of three different studies that we've been, uh, doing, both in Monroe County and with some of the other, uh, pilot counties in Indiana over the last few years. So the first one is the IRAS PAT validation, where we've been conducting, uh, local county validations in pilot counties. Uh, the second is a study that we did funded by the National Institute of Justice, to look at like the actual functional impact of pre-trial risk assessment implementation, uh, in practice. And third, a recent study we did focusing on, um, kind of the use of risk assessments in pre-trial supervision. So to start off, uh, really the kind of first body of work that we've been doing, uh, in Indiana has been, uh, local validations, because when a risk assessment is, you know, implemented in a new, uh, setting, we essentially want to see, okay, does that risk assessment actually predict outcomes? Uh, you know, in that jurisdiction that, you know, we're interested in predicting. So we've been, uh, you know, essentially doing these county-level validations. And thus far, we have done, uh, a total of five county-level validations, um, over the, the past, uh, you know, three years. And Monroe County's validation, um, really, uh, you know, we took kind of a one-year snapshot of, uh, individuals who are assessed between, uh, their start date, which was in October 2016 through September 2017. For the purposes of kind of that validation, we wanted to see, okay, we're kind of assessing people. Now what happens to those individuals while they're in the case, um, while they're in the community during their case processing period? So we defined our follow-up period as the date in which someone was released from jail to their actual date of case, uh, disposition. And that final sample was about, uh, 1,000, uh, defendants. So here are some of the results first kind of situated, uh, within, um, you know, the overall validation findings for all the five counties where we've done validations, but also kind of the pooled, uh, samples. So what this table presents is, um, AUC values, which stands for Area Under the Curve Statistics. And essentially what these are, are a very common test statistic that are used in, uh, the field of risk assessment to basically tell us how strong the predictive accuracy is of that tool. Um, and so on the right here, I kind of gave a, you know, loose guidelines on how we interpret, uh, AUC values. So, um, essentially they range from zero to one. If you consider a value of .5, that's basically like flipping a coin, right? Is this person going to commit pre-trauma misconduct or not in the community, right? A value of .5 would basically say it's no more accurate than chance. However, from that, we go upwards to, you know, a value of one, which would be perfect prediction. So really what we want to see is AUC values that are between kind of .64 and .7, which is good, or above .71, which would be excellent, um, predictive accuracy. And what you can see for Monroe County here in yellow is that we are seeing very good, um, predictive accuracy. So, um, you know, uh, quite excellent predictive accuracy for any FTA and any arrest during the community, during that pre-trial processing time in the community and good, uh, predictive, uh, validity for any new arrest. And you can see that those values are, uh, not only comparable to kind of the overall pooled sample, but, um, often exceed them as well. So that's exactly what we want to see. Um, when we look at kind of multi-variable models, and that's what, uh, these results are from, uh, essentially looking at the IRAS PAT risk bin. So those scores that you get on the IRAS PAT, they classify individuals based on whether they are low, whether they're moderate or high risk. And what we see is exactly what we want to see. That individuals who are high-risk relative to low-risk have a seven times greater likelihood of any FTA. Individuals who are high-risk have a 17.56 times greater likelihood of any arrest relative to low-risk defendants. And individuals who are high-risk relative to those who are low-risk have a 6.61 times greater likelihood of any new arrest. You see that those effect sizes are essentially tempered a little bit for moderate to low-risk defendants, but still, I mean, good predictive accuracy and exactly what we would want to see, um, in kind of assuming that moderate-risk defendants are at higher risk of failing, um, on, during that pre-trial period relative to low-risk and the same for high-risk defendants relative to moderate risk. Uh, and then even when we look at total scores, so, um, the IRAS PAT total score ranges from zero to nine based on those seven items. And we see that each one-point increase is associated with a 1.44 times greater likelihood of any FTA, a 1.7 times greater likelihood of any arrest and a 1.4 times greater likelihood of any new arrest. So overall, very strong predictive accuracy, both for Indiana as a whole. Um, we actually just published a paper on this, um, in Justice Quarterly, if anyone's interested, especially in Monroe County. And we're also finding, um, at least at the item level for Monroe County, that there are specific items that contribute, uh, to the predictive accuracy of, uh, the IRAS PAT more than others. And in Monroe County specifically, those items are employment, or rather unemployment, residential instability, having a prior history of incarceration and having prior FTA. So we know that, you know, of the kind of seven items that are assessed on the IRAS PAT, those happen to be, uh, the most influential. And then I, I think it's important to note that, um, when we look at the performance of other pre-trial risk assessment tools, that what we're seeing out of Indiana and Monroe County in particular, the, the strength of the evidence is meeting or exceeding, uh, the performance that we see of other tools and other settings. So overall, I think that's great. So overall, I think that's great. So second, I want to talk about a study that we did funded by the National Institute of Justice, where we wanted to basically compare people who received a risk assessment and a risk assessment-guided pretrial release decision to those who didn't have a risk assessment. And really, we were focused on kind of three key areas. One, the overall effect that we would see of pretrial risk assessments on both pretrial release decisions and pretrial misconduct outcomes. So, you know, does having a pretrial risk assessment actually, you know, increase the likelihood that someone will get non-financial release, which is a, you know, a big component of bail reform? And, you know, do we see that using a pretrial risk assessment helps with risk management of defendants in the community? That's also an important component of it. As, you know, many of you may know that there's kind of a national dialogue right now on issues of kind of racial disparities in risk assessment, particularly in the pretrial conducts, whether, you know, risk assessments are racially biased. And so one thing that was important to investigate in this study is whether we actually saw a difference in the impact of risk assessments on pretrial release decisions between black and white defendants. So I'll talk about that. And then lastly, whether we observe judge-level variation in pretrial release decisions. Okay, so just brief overview of our methods. This is a retrospective quasi-experimental study, which meant that, you know, we were using kind of existing data, and we didn't randomly assign people to conditions, but we did have four Indiana counties that participated in this study. Monroe County was one of them. And our final sample was around 7,400 pretrial defendants across those four counties. We had three study conditions. So the main study condition that we were interested in was those individuals who received a risk assessment during that kind of first year of the pilot in each county. And then we essentially created two comparison conditions. We had one comparison condition, which included people who were, you know, booked into jail during the pilot period, but for whatever reason didn't get assessed within kind of an initial three-day period. And of course, the pre-pilot comparison. So we knew kind of the exact date that each of these jurisdictions started using the risk assessment, and so we essentially looked at all the defendants that had been processed in the year prior to that start date. And so overall, across the four counties that participated in this study, we found that risk assessments were associated with higher rates of non-financial release and lower rates of bond set decisions. So individuals were more likely to get released on their own recognizance when they had a, when they were given a risk assessment, and they were less likely to have a bond set. And we actually found that when, for jurisdictions that had implemented structured guidelines, so this usually takes the form of like a decision-making matrix, which, you know, has kind of the charge severity and the risk level, kind of cross-tabulated, that jurisdictions that use that, and when we saw adherence to those structured guidelines, that actually amplified the effect of these pretrial risk assessments on release outcomes. So we saw kind of a stronger influence of those risk assessments on pretrial release outcomes. With respect to pretraumas conduct, kind of in, you know, not along the lines of what we thought we would find, we found that risk assessments were associated with a slightly higher rate of new nonviolent arrests. So it was approximately like a 5% increase in the rearrest rate across all jurisdictions, but there was no difference in FTAs, and the arrests were for nonviolent arrests. We found kind of no difference in violent arrests. And across all counties, we found limited evidence of judge-level variability in pretrial release decision-making. Most of the impact of risk assessments on decision-making was really at the individual level, rather than the judge level. With respect to Monroe County specifically, so we found that those who got a risk assessment in that pilot condition were 2.4 times more likely to receive non-financial release, to be released on their own recognizance. They were 1.6 times more likely to be released from pretrial detention at all, right, over the entire pretrial processing period. And they're about twice as likely to be released in three days, so faster than, you know, than is typical. When we looked at the impact of risk assessment by race, we essentially found no evidence that there was a disparate impact of risk assessment between black and white defendants. So essentially, that means that, you know, the risk assessment was associated with similar positive changes for both black and white defendants. Where we saw some evidence of an interaction effect by race and study condition, it was for two outcomes. One was released within three days, which is what you see here, and what we see relative to the pre-pilot comparison, which is this kind of light-shaded graph. In that condition, you see, you know, there is kind of an evidence and disparity prior to risk assessment being implemented, but after this pretrial risk assessment was implemented, you see that those levels of release, the proportion of defendants that are released within, you know, black defendants and white defendants was comparable, with black defendants even having a slightly higher rate of release. So we think that, you know, these are very promising findings. Additionally, we saw a significant interaction four days in pretrial detention. So whereas similarly, you can see in the pre-pilot comparison period that black defendants spent an average of 50 days, 49 days, right, in pretrial detention relative to white defendants who spent an average of 15 days. In the pilot period, that difference shrunk tremendously, right? So there was a much, much lesser, I guess, disparity following the implementation of pretrial risk assessments. So to conclude, essentially what we found is that defendants who were administered a pretrial risk assessment had a greater likelihood of release. That release typically came without financial conditions and in a shorter length of time. We found little evidence that there was a disparate impact of risk assessments by race. In contrast, black defendants who received a risk assessment had 71% fewer days in pretrial detention compared to that pre-pilot comparison period. And white defendants experienced a 40% reduction. So, you know, when we talk about kind of the role of pretrial risk assessment being, you know, somewhat of an equalizer, that's kind of the exact trend that we want to see. Okay, so lastly, I'm going to talk very briefly about pretrial supervision. So this is one of our most recent studies, and here, we really wanted to kind of look at this practice of pretrial supervision. There's very little kind of empirical research on supervision strategies. There's very little research looking at whether risk principle adherence, which is matching kind of someone's assessed risk level to their, the intensity of their supervision, whether that actually matters in determining their success on supervision, and then whether we would see kind of evidence of judicial adherence to structured recommendations for pretrial supervision. So this study, we had five Indiana pilot counties that participated. Monroe County was one of them, approximately 1,600 pretrial defendants. And as you can see, our main outcome was to look at pretrial supervision failure. So that was defined as an arrest, a technical violation resulting in a warrant, or a failure to appear. And across all findings, essentially what we found was, in contrast to kind of expectations, limited support for the effectiveness of supervision strategies. So kind of across those five counties, what we found was that people who received higher intensity supervision had a higher rate of failure. This was even after adjusting for their risk level and their charge severity, right? So when you monitor people more intensely, they are more likely to fail on supervision. And this was driven primarily by new arrests and technical violations. We did see good evidence of risk principle adherence, so matching kind of high-risk defendants to high levels of supervision, matching low-risk defendants to lower levels of supervision, a little bit less so for low-risk individuals. So when we saw kind of evidence of judicial overrides of the recommended conditions, that was mainly for low-risk individuals who are more likely to be placed at kind of higher-risk levels. But we didn't find any evidence that judicial override of recommended conditions had an effect on, had an effect on the supervision success of the individuals in the community. For Monroe County in particular, what was interesting is we actually didn't find that same effect where higher intensity supervision was associated with higher rates of failure. So, you know, Troy and I have different interpretations of this. My interpretation of this is that it's a very good thing, right? It shows that you're kind of doing some risk mitigation on individuals who are high-risk and supervised at high levels of supervision. But we also didn't find any differences in supervision failure rates among individuals who received electronic monitoring or those who received bond. Where we did find a significant difference was among defendants who received drug screening as a condition of supervision, and those individuals were more likely to fail on supervision. So we also looked at, of course, risk principle adherence, and I'll have to say that for Monroe County, I think we had the strongest evidence of risk principle adherence, so that high-risk individuals were most likely to get high supervision, and the exact opposite for low-risk individuals. We didn't find any evidence that judicial decisions that were non-adherent to structured guidelines actually differed by risk level, so that's a good thing, right? We're not finding that, you know, that high-risk individuals, for example, are more likely to have their recommended supervision overridden and then be placed at like a lower supervision, right? So that was a good thing. And then we also found that defendants who received adherent decisions to those structured guidelines were no more or less likely to fail on supervision relative to defendants who received a non-adherent decision. So that use of kind of the judicial override of what was recommended had no impact on the supervision success of those individuals in the community. And I'm going to turn it back over to Troy to talk through these.
Yeah, so, thank you, Evan. And then, so what does that mean for us? Out of all of that research, what are some of the implications that we have in terms of our practices, and how does that inform our practices? So when we look at that validation, the biggest things that we want to do is to continue to focus on those high and moderate-risk defendants, because as you can see, the tool predicts really pretty well. And I should have mentioned before, the tool really measures two things. It measures the likelihood somebody's going to fail to appear in court during the pretrial period, and it measures whether or not somebody may commit a new offense during, or the likelihood somebody might commit a new offense during that pretrial period. So it's really just those two things. And as we noted, the moderate and high-risk defendants have a higher likelihood of that, so we'll continue to focus on those. But we also want to focus on the factors related to risk. Evan talked about some of those particularly item-level parts of the risk assessment that contributed, more so to the elevated risk, and we really want to kind of focus on some of those factors. And then the other thing is we want to focus on the time at risk somebody has prior to misconduct. So there might be, there are some things that we can look at in terms of how long it takes before somebody might fail to appear in court, and look at some of those patterns that we see and try to work on mitigation strategies to help with those. In talking about the risk assessment in practice, the NIJ study, you know, we'll continue the implementation of the risk assessment and hopefully try to consider some expansion of the opportunities to use that pretrial risk assessment in shorter timeframes. As you saw, that release within three days, we're doing a pretty good job, but, you know, we don't have 24 assessments in the jail. We don't have weekend staffing to cover those assessments during the jail, during the weekends. So we might try to continue looking at ways that we might be able to expand some of the opportunities to get risk assessments done more frequently or more quickly. And also look at, hopefully, some greater adherence to those release protocol guidelines, so that we have, they follow kind of in tune in terms of higher risk going through supervision and those types of things, and a little bit less in terms of not adherence to the guidelines. In terms of the pretrial supervision, you know, we want to continue to minimize the use of electronic monitoring and drug testing as conditions of pretrial release. I will say that we use it very rarely now. When I looked up the stats this afternoon, less than 1% of all of our pretrial defendants that are, have their cases pending right now are on electronic monitoring. That's a very, very small number of people as compared to some of the other counties that are in pretrial pilots, or operating pretrial pilots. Again, we want to continue to encourage decreasing the use, or encourage less use of bond in release conditions, as we saw that it doesn't have a great effect in terms of pretrial misconduct. And we also, as Evan talked about, there wasn't a lot, some of our supervision strategies may not be doing as much, or may not be having as much effect as we would like. And I think we really need to reevaluate the structure of our pretrial supervision levels and the content and the purpose of each client contact, to make sure that we're being as effective as we possibly can to do those two things, help reduce FTAs or increase our court appearances, and reduce the number of people who are rearrested during that pretrial period. So real quick, some of the future research that we're looking at in terms of the pretrial side of things, we're going to start looking at sanctions and incentives and how, what role they play in outcomes for pretrial supervision, as well as our graduated supervision approach. So if somebody is on a pretrial case management, for example, after they're released, if so much time has passed without any violations, new arrests, and they've appeared at all court hearings, we can slowly move them off of supervision. And we're going to study that, and to make sure that we're doing well in that area and making sure that we're appropriately using that. And then the other thing that we might want to look at in the future in terms of global criminal justice kind of research would be to investigate impossible research surrounding the impact of criminal justice decision points, not just pretrial, on race and how that impacts. So that could be another future research area that we can look at. The other thing that I wanted to tell you, this was all focused on pretrial, but as a probation department, we're also looking, we're involved in a couple of the research projects right now that I'm really excited about as well. One that I'm working on with Dr. Lauter, as well as two other researchers from IU Bloomington, Miriam Northcutt-Bolmar, and from IUPY is Dr. Eric Brahman, on reducing revocations, or reducing probation revocations. And we're looking at the pathways which lead clients to probation revocation, and hopefully we'll be able to learn some of those pathways and learn some mitigation strategies to disrupt those pathways, to hopefully reduce the likelihood somebody's going to be revoked and sent to jail or prison. That study should be concluded sometime mid-next year. And then the other study we're involved in was also an Arnold Ventures grant, and that's also with Dr. Miriam Northcutt-Bolmar, and it's examining the impact that fines and fees have on outcomes related to community supervision. And that should be wrapping up next year as well. So we have some good information for you on those as well, coming up. Oops, wrong way. So we really, again, we really appreciate your time tonight to be able to talk to you about what we're doing and our efforts in these areas. And if you have any questions, we're more than happy to help answer those.
Right. Well, thank you, Dr. Lauter and Mr. Hatfield, and as always, a very informative, data-filled, terrific presentation from our partners in probation. I've got a question regarding some of the statistics with the pretrial supervision, and you had mentioned that 1% of our folks are in that status are under electronic monitoring right now, but I didn't hear that how many are also doing, subject to drug screens. Do we know how many, what percentage of those folks are doing the drug screens?
Yeah, it's very small. That's only about 1.2%. And it, 17 people currently. And as far as electronic monitoring, 14 people that are on those pretrial conditions at this time.
Great.
So it's a very, very small number.
Thank you. Mr. I, and then Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I see that we have Judge Decop on the call, and I wanted to offer an invitation for her to speak if she's available and wants to say anything at this point.
Thank you. I am not the one, obviously, who is totally knowledgeable about the statistics in the study. That would be the two that you heard from tonight, which is why you didn't see me or hear me, because I don't believe in interrupting the experts when they're actually saying something that they know what they're talking about and can explain it better. I want to thank you too for the opportunity to present to you. I think that pretrial release, one of the emphases is that it takes partnership with the community, and it takes partnership with- and it takes partnership with the other branches of government. Because obviously you're talking about, um, resources, but you're talking about who you have, um, in the jail, why they're in the jail and what you're, what we are all looking at as far as releasing them from jail. So, um, I also thank you for the opportunity and the willingness for you to, um, listen to the presentation and, um, to be supportive and to work with us. Because, um, the Supreme Court has newly formed a pre-trial committee, um, of one of the committees that the Supreme Court does. It's, it's a new committee. And for the first time, that committee is, does not only have judges on it, but it also has people from other, um, other partnerships, other, other community supporters. Because pre-trial release is, is seen that way, it should be that way. The team that we have in Monroe County is comprised of individuals from across the board, um, involved in various, um, segments and, and things involving the community. And I think that that's very important for what we're doing, make what we're doing a success. And as Troy said, we are going to continue to look at, um, the data that we collect, um, to deal with, um, how we're, what we're doing with it, what does it show we should be doing with it. One of the things that we have, are looking at is that, um, the effect of COVID. Um, when we went to, um, essential only court hearings, how that looked, what we did as far as jail. And again, we did that in partnership, um, in, in talking to, um, various people involved in the system as to what that should look like. So it's given us an opportunity to look at, at that as well. Um, and we are ever so grateful, um, for our, um, for Dr. Laura, for our researchers who are willing to work for us. They're, they're so knowledgeable. Um, and it's extremely helpful to have this data and to, and to continue to move forward and look at what we're doing. So we will continue to let you know as we continue on.
All right, thank you, Judge. Councilmember Hawk, did you have a question?
Working with a different computer, I'm sorry. I review the bookings list every day. And I'm sure there's probably somebody in your office looking at that, or maybe you're just waiting until it, it hits your office. But it seems to me that there's an awful lot of, either it says transient or it's from one of the, like, Wheeler Mission or Shalom, or they don't say Shalom, but you, you know, by now we have the address memorized. So what can we do, uh, to try to alleviate some of that problem that, that before they commit the crime, once they are here in this community? And I don't know what the answer to that is, but it seems to me that we have a lot of people coming into Monroe County. And, you know, we, we, we have to be, you know, responsibly careful of those people too. So I don't know whether I'm the, uh, the rest of the council member, look at those booking sheets every day. Because it, it just is a reminder that we do bring in a lot of people from other counties into our county because we do have the services. But then some of those people are, are acting out in criminal fashion, so. And that, does that show up on your report somehow, Troy?
So I will say that we, we track information like that in terms of our homeless population that we serve or transient population that we serve. I know, um, if they are assigned, uh, pre-trial case management services, our case managers will try to tie them into services in our community to, um, try to increase the likelihood that they'll find some, uh, stable residence, uh, as well as other needed services that they might have. So, uh, we, our staff does try to help in many ways that we possibly can, um, uh, and try to point them in the right direction.
And I'm.
Mr. McKim?
Thanks. First of all, this is absolutely a terrific presentation. I probably have a thousand questions, which I will not ask you tonight, but this is absolutely fantastic. Thank you for Counselor Iverson for, um, you know, getting, getting this in front of us. So just, I'm, first of all, I guess, I'm really glad that the risk assessment was examined for systemic racial bias because I know that's one of the criticisms of a lot of risk assessments used in the correction system is that they essentially just perpetuate, uh, existing racial biases, you know, by looking, uh, very extensively at arrest records, which often affect people of color, uh, at a disproportionate rate. And we know that even here, I mean, we know that based on the, the data we've looked at in jail bookings that, that black people are clear, are subject to arrest and booking into jail at a rate disproportionate to their representation of the population. We know that. But what I kind of heard you say is that the use of this risk assessment kind of potentially helps to level the playing field in, in that, that they actually wind up then spending fewer days in jail and that that effect is even disproportionate in favor of, of black people. Would you, would you agree with that, that interpretation?
That is true for Monroe County. For the four counties that we looked at, which were, um, Monroe, Hamilton, Hendricks, and Allen. Those were the four counties that participated in that study. We did not find the same evidence of an interaction effect. So we didn't find that, you know, basically the risk assessment benefited black defendants more. But we found similar changes for both groups. So there wasn't any sort of evidence that risk assessment was having a disparate impact. Rather, the benefits that accrued for people overall accrued for both groups. So I mean, that was good. But, you know, Troy, uh, he, you know, right after I gave him the results, he was like, oh, well, we need to see how Monroe County's doing. So I'm like, okay, well, I'll run those results for you individually. So I just want to be clear that, you know, these are, this is what we're seeing in Monroe County, not what we saw kind of in the study as a whole.
Okay, then thank you for that clarification. Um, and then also, uh, drug screening. So you mentioned that that was associated with a, a higher degree of failure. Is that presumably because you just create more opportunities for people to fail, the more likely that they're going to fail on, on one of those, uh, screens? Is that, is that kind of the reason for that?
Yeah.
And then I guess my question is, are there policy benefits of drug screening that outweigh those additional failures, which may cause the defendant to spend more time in jail? Or really, should we just be reducing the use of drug screening overall?
So I don't know, Judge, if you want to answer that or not. I, I know that, you know, for, for conditions that are placed on a pre-trial defendant, they are individualized. So there are very specific reasons why a court may order those, uh, things, uh, for an individual. These are not standard conditions. So, and Judge, if you have more to add to that?
I think that that's true. One of the benefits of pre-trial assessment and pre-trial release is it's a combination of the risk assessment tool. And it is still the individual, um, and the arguments or the issues surrounding that individual as to what, what appears to be best, um, to serve them. And so, yeah, I think that one of the things we're looking at is, is do we need to order screens as much as we have? And if we've been doing it, why are we doing it? And then tailoring that to ordering those screens for those individuals, that it's going to truly benefit pre-trial. One of the benefits that I like about pre-trial, the pre-trial assessment program is that with the problem-solving courts, the assessment is catching those people that may be appropriate for a problem-solving court earlier so that we can start them then on a track to be able to start dealing with their addiction and then getting them into a problem-solving court, if that's what they choose to do. And that's what the state's agreeing to do. And, but get them started on, started in that and then get them started in a problem-solving court. So that we begin to address that, that those specific addiction issues. So in that, yes, it's very beneficial. And then what we also need to look at is, are we just ordering screens because that's what we've always done? That seemed to be a way to sort of keep track of people. And it's not that beneficial for some people. It's not something that we really do need to be tracking pre-trial or need to be, um, as concerned with pre-trial. So the answer to your question, both, yes, actually. And that's, and that's what we're looking at. And, and we're always keeping in mind that what we are looking at is tailoring what we are doing to that individual or that, that individual case, um, so that we can be doing what's best for the community and for that individual pre-trial.
But we, we're already, I think Mr. Hatfield said that 99% of the defendants under pre-trial supervision are not receiving drug screens. Is that, I mean, that's a pretty 1% is a low number. Could you, for the one, for that, for that 1% that's getting the drug screens, what are the, the common? I know it's a very small number, uh, that are getting the drug screens, probably even a smaller number that are, uh, failing them. What are the most common substances that you're seeing, marijuana and alcohol?
Oh, let's see. Marijuana, alcohol, methamphetamine, cocaine, LSD seems to be making a comeback. Suboxone, yeah. We're, we're pretty much seeing the gamut. What we're looking for though is the, what the charge is, what the history is of the addiction, what we're seeing as far as that person's, that person's needs, what, what they've, when they've been booked in, have they been booked in more than once because they're dealing, um, clearly we're saying, especially with methamphetamine, we're seeing a pattern. And so we're trying to do something to get them the assistance while we're not keeping them in jail.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Iverson.
Yeah, uh, my, my first question is, uh, for Professor Louder. First of all, it's great C P values in a county council meeting. So thank you for, for having those. My second question was, uh, was spurred by an earlier question. And, and I know some of the population that you're studying is, is pretty low and we're not a metropolitan area. Like, did you run any power studies? Like, is there enough, uh, of, of sample size to, to have these, these conclusions? Or I guess, I gotta, I'll just leave it at that.
Did we run a power analysis? Interesting. Um, so, I mean, uh, in the traditional sense, no. But, um, when you're doing, and this is just like, ooh, very deep in the weeds.
We don't have to get into the weeds, no.
Oh, you asked a question that's deep in the weeds.
All right, let's get in the weeds. All right, fine.
Yeah, so I mean, the problem is when you have super, super like, um, complicated models. So these models not only were, um, and I, I didn't go into all these kind of methodological details, but, um, you know, we use propensity score matching within county to match people based on a variety of characteristics. So that results in, you know, when you put, when you put that information into a, uh, you know, stats program, it outputs, um, robust standard errors, which is a much more like conservative approach. These models were also all nested by judge. So we're parsing out judge level variability and pre-trial decision-making from our models to kind of increase the validity of, um, level one inferences. So the more complicated model you have, you can't just like, put all that data into like a power calculator, right? Like, it doesn't exist, right? You have to do like simulations in order to do like a power analysis for, um, that kind of study. I will say though, that, you know, we wouldn't find a statistically significant effect and consistent statistically significant effects if we didn't have sufficient power, right? You would find basically no effects if your models were not sufficiently powered. And we can also look at kind of the confidence intervals around our effects to basically tell us that because of our sample size, they're decently narrow, um, at least for, uh, you know, this, the conditions overall, which tells us that they're pretty stable estimate. So, I mean, I feel good about it.
Okay, good. You know, yeah. It's just, it's nice to hear that. It, it's that added confidence that, you know, what we're, what we're seeing is, is, is true. You know, there, there is that.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and I can, I mean, I can tell you, you know, with a federal grant process, right? We, you apply for the grant funding, it's competitive funding. You have to write a whole kind of methodological, you know, primer on it. When you submit your grant report, that goes under peer review. So you get peer review from, you know, two reviewers who give you comments back. You submit peer review for that. We just had a paper, a paper from the study published in the Journal of Criminal Justice that had a multiple reviewers who reviewed it. So it's very like, high-quality, um, rigorous research that, you know, is being conducted here, um, in Indiana.
Excellent. Thank you again for presenting. My next question, uh, is, uh, for, uh, Troy. One of the things you mentioned was that you'd like to see an expansion of the use of, of the tool. And I, I, my question is, how many people are we talking about that aren't getting the tool that we think could have a positive benefit from, from having access to that?
So it's not necessarily a number of people that we're missing because, um, we are able to do an assessment on, uh, the people in our target population. It's just how quickly can we get it done? So, uh, everybody who's in our target population, and that's basically anybody who is arrested for a new offense in Monroe County, who is not already on community supervision in some other way. So they're not on probation, they're not on community corrections program. So it's a new offense. We go in and do an assessment in the jail the following morning after arrest. And if they by chance bail out or, or submit a bond and, uh, and are released prior to, um, us doing the assessment, they are required to come into our office that next business day, um, and do the assessment so that we can still have those results to the court, uh, prior to their initial hearing. So it's really more timeliness, how quickly can we get them done? Rather than, uh, not being able to handle the capacity of the numbers. So if we are able to do them more quickly, there might be, um, uh, a greater chance to get people out even sooner. Depending on, yes, depending on other factors. Go ahead.
Councilmember Wilt and then, uh, Councilmember Munson.
Well, I just want to echo the, the thanks for bringing this information to us and, um, and the fascinating depths of, of this information. I'm gonna probably need a little bit more time to process a lot of it. And that might be evidence, evidence, um, in my question. In our packet, we have, I don't think it's the, the article, um, maybe it is, but it's, it's the final report on the validation part, I believe, of what you did. And, um, so that's sort of what I was familiarizing myself with prior to the presentation. And what I noticed in, you were mentioning in the conclusion about, um, the, some of the limitations and that your sample was largely Caucasian, largely male. The male makes perfect sense. The Caucasian though, isn't what we typically think of as representative of our jail population necessarily. So I'm wondering, um, A, am I completely off base there? And B, was that similar in the, was the sample the same in the other studies, um, that you did? And specifically the ones where you were looking at that, the, the effects of race?
So I think it's a two-part question. Part for me, part for Troy. I can say, I mean, in terms of the sample, so the samples for the validation and the, um, the, the N I J, the second study, um, were very similar. So, you know, they were, they were generated separately. So the process by which we kind of select people and, you know, match them, um, a little bit different. But, uh, you know, same data, same time period, um, just kind of slightly different inclusion criteria, um, for creating those samples. In terms of the supervision study, I believe we used a more, uh, recent kind of snapshot which reflected, um, kind of more recent supervision decision-making guidelines that were in place in Monroe County. So that study, um, that study and that report is available as well. It's not publicly available, but it is available if you want a copy of it. That, that study, um, would, would have been a completely different sample. As for like the representativeness of the jail population, Troy?
So, I mean, the best that I can say is that, um, what you noticed is we've done about 8,000 assessments over four years. So that's an average of about 2,000 a year. So, um, with the samples, the things that, uh, Dr. Louder has to make sure that she is able to do is to be able to match them all with court cases, match them all with jail data, match them all with risk assessments. And then, um, also make sure their case has been disposed in order to be able to include them. So all of those factors taken together, um, may have caused that, you know, that discrepancy that you're kind of seeing or that you feel like might be there, um, in terms of, of why the sample is the way it is. It's just, um, kind of maybe how, how it fell, I guess. But, um, as Evan said, that, you know, that, uh, the samples are different based on the different studies. And, uh, also kind of, um, getting that final sample and the methods to get there, um, might have differed slightly as well.
I'll, I'll just add on to that, one of the challenges that we've seen kind of across, um, the various pilot counties is that these assessments are oftentimes being used in different ways. And so for us as researchers, right, like, and for, I mean, Indiana as a whole, right? We want to make kind of, you know, We want to make kind of, you know, generalized conclusions about, hey, like, how effective is this? How valid is this assessment for actually predicting outcome? And so one of the challenges that we faced is kind of how do you make, you know, cross country county comparisons when you have this tool being used in different um contexts across studies? So um that was why we kind of developed very strict protocols for, you know, hey, in order to link an assessment to jail booking, like, that assessment has to be conducted within, you know, three days of, you know, someone's booking into jail, right, to kind of model prototypical um case processing. So you're right that that may have kind of compromised the generalizability of a sample to kind of Monroe County population. Um, but what it does do is it allows us to kind of compare across, make sure we're comparing the same thing, right, across various counties.
Thank you, yeah. I'm gonna definitely have to sit with some of this. But it's really nice.
Go ahead.
So, um, speaking last and bringing questions to you last, I've heard a number of my questions already answered. But like Peter, I loved reading about P values because I think in uh eight years on the county council, uh, these are the first Ps I've seen. And I thought this was a great study, but I was really stuck at the beginning of reading the the validation report because I didn't know what F T A was. And that wasn't explained, and I kept thinking. Final testing, no, no, that's not it. Uh, eventually I figured it out. But I thought this was a really important study and uh your presentation, Professor Louder and Mr. Hatfields were were really great in giving us a fuller picture of what you've been doing. I think what I was uh struck by, first of all, was that we had independent researchers working on this rather than uh county employees. And I think that was very important. Secondly, I want to comment on the outcomes, and that is uh uh, the research team struggled uh to have a sample to work with that they uh could have good confidence in because there were many um missing variables. Uh, they couldn't connect cases to individuals, court cases to arrests, et cetera. And I wonder if there is a better tracking and coordination in this regard uh at present or in the future, being planned for the future.
Um, so I think, I mean, I think one thing Troy could say is that, you know, they are collecting uh as counties have evolved in their pilot programs, right? Those data are being better collected. Um, and so that's something we've seen even more recently with the more recent validations. We're doing validations right now in Porter County, um in Grant County. And, you know, they're, they've had a couple of years to kind of get their, you know, stuff together, right? And so they're kind of giving us more integrated data sets of, you know, um, you know, a single spreadsheet with kind of all these uh, all these components integrated. Um, I will say, and this is something, you know, I'm kind of becoming increasingly wary of is that, you know, as counties are developing their pretrial pilot um programs and, you know, kind of increasing their use of pretrial supervision, um, you know, giving us data on people, say, who, you know, perhaps had charges filed, you know, six months ago and then were assessed, you know, now, um, you know, six months later, whatever. All those types of factors, um, you know, influence the extent to which we would see good predictive accuracy of that assessment. Um, and so in my mind, putting those kind of tight controls around, and this is, you know, it's funny you ask us because this is something I battle with kind of the peer reviewers on. They're like, well, the assessments are missing, like, where are those? Why could you only match half of the assessments? And I'm like, no, they're not missing, like, they they're there, they just don't, they don't correspond to kind of how risk assessments are designed to be used in practice, right? And how we would best test kind of the predictive utility of this tool. And that is, someone gets booked into jail, they get assessed, they have charges filed, all in a tight, you know, temporal uh linkage, right? Um, and that we're able to see that person get released, you know, shortly thereafter and track their outcomes up until their court case disposition. Um, and so for me as a researcher, I'm kind of interested in like, you know, testing the tool as it is designed to be uh used in practice. And so uh, you know, that that has truly been my um my priority and why you kind of see that that difference. Um, but I think Troy would be able to talk more about kind of the the changing data collection procedures.
Well, I know at the state level, um, uh, Judge Decoff had mentioned it, that the judicial conferences started a new pretrial committee. There are several committees that I'm on that uh talk about data. For for whatever reason, I'm one of the people that like data and uh and end up uh on different committees talking about it. But we are making efforts to improve uh the data collection and the pretrial side of things. Um, it, we have very clear definitions. The one of the biggest things that we struggle with is is having very clear definitions of what all of these different things mean to make sure that if I'm collecting something that uh Grant County is collecting the same thing and in the same way. Um, so we're working on all of those areas to try to improve the data that we are collecting across the state and to make sure it's all uh good comparison. So, you know, it's apples to apples from county to county. Um, uh, there's efforts being done in that realm. I, you know, I think uh we still got a ways to go, but we'll get there.
Thank you. I want to follow up by by asking about uh the amount of time for uh pretrial release and uh the variables that go into that. And you, um, I think you mentioned that um some some happen very quickly, others take a considerable amount of time. Uh, have you uh, have you looked at uh what you can do to uh increase the timeliness of pretrial release?
Basically, we're doing the best that we can, but the truth of the matter is, is that we don't have the money to put somebody to be able to do this 24/7. And if we did that, then we we could have assessments done much more quickly. We're one of the counties that do initial hearings more often than other counties do. We're one of the counties that actually um try to to assess people as quickly as we're able to do it. So because we don't have the availability to have somebody to to assess over the weekend, um, we're not, we're delayed in that it's it's going to be from the time that um they were released or if it's a Friday night or a Saturday until they come in on Monday to be assessed. But we made the commitment when we did this that we are going to assess everybody that that um was eligible to be assessed. Um, it took meetings with the um defense bar because there was some pushback about those people who bond out having to be assessed. But our view was is if we were going to do this in a fair way, that everybody who should be assessed needs to be assessed. Um, so that it is, it is something that we're looking at, but we we do it as quickly as we can based upon the resources that we have.
Okay, well, I would, I would be interested in in hearing more about what uh Monroe County uh contemplates for the future in this regard and also what other counties are doing. So if you have that information, uh, I would be interested in hearing this. So thank you.
All right, Mr. Decker.
I'll be, I'll be really quick. All my council colleagues have asked really great questions and um they they brought even more discussion in that's good. I just want to compliment Judge, I want to compliment you, I want to compliment Troy, I know Linda's in our attendees and I and Doctor, thank you for being here with us as well and explaining this and going through it. You know, ultimately, the difficulties of the year that um we've had nationally and beyond even that, I think would be benefited by conversations where departments and our systems looked at these numbers and looked at the stories and and we're open to that kind of introspection. I think we've had that in this department and we've had it in our county um to some extent for quite a long time because we've asked those things and that's awesome. You know, the easy thing, maybe not for the community, but the easy thing for the department would be maybe just go about your job, et cetera. But we have continuously sought out these opportunities to study our systems and look at those things. And the fact that we're talking about data sets tonight and maybe we're the only county council that's got this discussion on their agenda tonight, and I suspect we are, the state will likely benefit the rest of the state down the road and certainly this community. And I just, I think that's awesome. This is a community that values that. We've got constituents that speak out about that all the time. And myself, like the judge, I I'm very smart about knowing what I either don't know and when we have experts and we need to listen to it. Um, as we were reflecting tonight and Peter was talking um uh about several factors i- in in interaction with uh the professor, I I was remembering my quantitative analysis class and and wanting to hide that that grade. It wasn't as good as my qualitative analysis, I'll say that. So it's awesome that you're here, it's awesome that you can do it. I tell Linda Brady all the time, you could eat off the floors of the this information. It's so clean and it's so well put together and it's kind of a model for things. So I'll be quiet, but thank you so much for being with us and expressing this, good things will come from it.
All right, well, if there's nothing further, uh, again, thank you so much to uh, Mr. Hatfield, uh, Professor Louder. Uh, thanks Judge for joining us tonight as well. Um, and uh, we look forward to keeping in touch.
Can I just say one more thing quickly?
Sure.
Troy, did you tell them we're certified?
Oh, no.
Did you tell them we're certified? Did you tell them how many counties in the state are certified? Um, we are certified, um, uh, we have been certified um our pretrial release. And I would like to say that um Dr. Louder has been amazing. Um, she's been amazing to work for. Um, obviously, this is, this is data, this is, that is interesting, but it's also difficult, as she has said, to collect, especially when you're talking about this type of new data. And um, and she's, she's very, very, very good to work with and uh she's an amazing researcher. And obviously, without Troy, none of us, um, we we go to Troy all the time for our data and what does this mean? And what what have we done to here today and what are we doing with the numbers? But um, we are committed to continuing to go forward with this and and continue to use the data so that we can figure out how best keep using this. In a lot of ways, for a system, this is um pretrial release and what goes with it is as it sounds ludicrous, but it's it's a different way to look at things and it's the right way to look at things. But um with the help of of um researchers like Dr. Louder and Troy with his expertise um and the and the people in our system who are willing to to work with it and to do it and and to keep looking at it, we're gonna keep moving forward. But I didn't want, I didn't think Troy told you that we're certified. Troy, how many are certified in the state? I think like the third.
Only three.
Oh, wow, congratulations.
Yeah.
That's great.
I'm gonna boast, what can I say? But.
We need to get a press release out on that, that's great.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, have a great evening, appreciate it. Okay. Where are we at here? We are on item seven. And this is uh this is an addendum to our WIS agreement. Ms. Wiltz, you have a motion for.
I do, counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval, the addendum to have Wagner Erwin and Shealy create permanent part-time position job descriptions.
Second.
We have uh Council Administrator Kim Shell and Council Attorney Margie Rice with us. Who would like to present this one?
Well, I'll I'll start and then Margie can jump in when she needs to, so. Um, uh, during, um, I think it was the public hearing with regards to budgets. Um, there was a um, um, I think Counselor Wiltz brought up, you know, she wanted to have uh the base rate of the part-time hourly be a living wage. And with that, uh, there was the discussion uh that our permanent part-time hourly people um probably the majority of them do not have um job descriptions. And so um I sent a um email out to uh Wagner Erwin and Shealy asking them um what would it cost to include um about 80 plus um part-time, uh, permanent part-time positions that we have um to include that in the uh review that we have going on right now. And so they came back uh with this addendum um for um $10,800 it would cost to include doing job descriptions for those permanent part-time. So I just need to know if you want to move forward uh with including that as they uh meet with each department. And if so, we uh they can easily add that on.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Rock, thank you, Michelle.
Yes, do you, I mean, not only will they be providing the job descriptions, but should we assume that they will be tying it to a classification so that we can use the same kind of classification system for permanent part-time in future?
That part I don't know.
It seems to me that's something we in order for us to actually use this data, it seems to me that's what something we would need.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Munson and then Mr. McKim.
So during um, during our budget work sessions in 2013, I really first learned about uh the category of employee called permanent part-time. And um, I do realize that this is, this is a good percentage of of our uh and at that time, there was mentioned by the more experienced members of the council um and some discussion about having uh job descriptions for them. And I thought, well, of course there should be job descriptions for them. And so that's, that was eight years ago. And I I think we have to move forward uh with this uh now that you know there's a lot of ancient history here. Thanks.
Thank you, yes, uh, Mr. McKim.
So the letter that we received from uh the uh from Kent Erwin that's included in the packet does say that the cost is to prepare and classify an estimated 80-plus job descriptions for permanent part-time positions. So that's included and and yeah, I I otherwise, I think this is a no-brainer, absolutely.
Right, right.
Okay, any other questions or uh discussion on this? So we need to, uh, we've we've got a, we've got a motion, right? This is not just a discussion.
It was discussion and approval.
Okay. So um, so we'll see if there's any public comment on this. Seeing none, uh, we can do a roll call vote, please. Ms. Hawk, yes?
And I just wanted to make the comment why this is so important and why I thought it was very important back in 2013 and 2010.
Maybe earlier.
And I pushed hard for it because we had some departments, because we have budgets that just say this is how much you can spend for the year on these hourly employees. And it might be a range, but you didn't know what they might be paying uh for clerical work in one office, it might be $25 in clerical and another office might be $10 or so. It was very, very widely apart. And so this is, we really have to do this, it's a matter of fairness and for us to really do our jobs. So I'm glad we're finally going to get around to it. I've been asking for it how many years? Sometimes you just have to be patient.
Well, I'm I'm glad, I'm glad we have you on pack, Councilmember Hawk.
Yeah, right, it happened immediately, not. Whatever. Whatever.
Okay, so any public comment? I don't believe we had any. And so we'll do a a roll call vote now to to approve this request.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
That brings us to our next item. Always love to get to the minutes. And
Counsel, I'm, yeah. I move to approve the summary minutes for September 22, sorry, September 22nd, 2020 work session and October 20, 2020, 2021 budget adoption as presented.
Second.
Okay. Anybody have anything they'd like to discuss with the minutes? No? Okay, any public comment on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and we are now on to council comments. Do we have any council members who would like to make comment? Yes, Ms. McKim.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First of all, Judge Galvin sent us a note earlier today inviting us to participate in a two-day workshop presented by Child Advocates of Indianapolis entitled Interrupting Racism. He said that this was the best two-day program he's ever attended. The Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative obtained a grant to make this program available virtually on November 17th and 18th. And I know that two days is a pretty tough ask for many of us. But I really hope and I know that Judge Galvin and the JDAI folks really hope that at least one of us can make it to this important workshop. So if anyone can make it, please let Christine McAfee know by the end of the week. Secondly, the auditor and her staff were not able to make it today because they've been pulled in other directions. But wanted me as their liaison to let everybody know two quick things. One, that they did submit the budget data to the state. They ran into some technical difficulties that were absolutely not of their making, but the DLGF gateway programmers were up to the task and made the necessary fixes. And so they did get get the information submitted. And two, that the office, the auditor's office just received the detailed food and beverage tax information and have not had time to process it yet and give us the breakdown of city versus county yet, but will very soon. So, you know, keep, keep our eyes peeled for that information. And third, I'm sure everybody heard that the election board expanded the hours of operation early voting based on the high demand and long lines. I don't know yet what the additional costs will be for the additional staffing needed. But there is definitely a chance that they might need to approach us for an additional to fund the additional staffing. I just wanted to thank the clerk and the election board on the record and say that I am strongly supportive of this move and will gladly support any additional appropriation to cover these and other costs needed to ensure smooth and fair election and hope all my colleagues will as well. So thank you very much.
Here, here. All right, Mr. Iverson, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. On, I know this weekend is going to be a heavy trick-or-treating weekend. Traditionally, we are in the Halloween season. However, based on information from the Centers for Disease Control, the, I do want to alert everyone that these can be high-risk for spreading virus activities. So there are several safer alternatives that I encourage you to look into. Please do that. And of course, if you may have COVID-19 or if you may have been exposed to someone with COVID-19, you should not participate in in-person Halloween festivities and should not be giving out candy to trick-or-treaters. We just want everyone to be safe this Halloween and for the rest of the fall activities. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. Any other council comments this evening? And I believe, Michelle, did you have something you needed to address as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk to counsel. Wes reached out to me one day last week and we're setting up Zoom meetings now with department heads. And so this is the initial process. We had one today and basically, it's just meeting with the department, you know, going over what they see as a need, that kind of thing. The one today was just extremely difficult because it was the council office, you know, so, you know, there's so many people in that office. But so, no, actually, it was, it was rela, it was really nice. It was very informative. We're gonna, we got to, you know, see the process and you know, they asked the questions of each department. So every department will have questions geared toward them specifically. So Elizabeth and I will be sitting in on each one of these meetings going forward. We've got three more scheduled for this week. And they're, they were extremely grateful for the the legwork that we had. Elizabeth and I had put in ahead of time along with Margie. So I think it's making their their work a lot easier for them. So so I just want to let you know where we've begun that. They're working hard, you know, on getting that all together. The other thing I wanted to talk about was calendar. You know, it's, it's getting close to the end of the year and I just want you guys to think about it. I don't need a decision tonight, but I'm going to stick with the Tuesday meetings that just, that seems to be the the best night for council meetings moving forward. We've had Tuesday for several years now. Several years ago, you guys did meet at 5:00. And I know that there were sometimes, long time ago, you met during the day. So I'm just wondering, you know, what would be some good times? I asked if we could start earlier. It would help on our end with Megan and I so that we're not, if we ever get back to being in the office, we don't have to stay as long, you know, in the building or together, that kind of thing. But I just need you guys to think about moving forward for 2021. You know, do you want to stick with the 5:30 time? Do you want to try a 5:00 time, even 4:30? You know, I don't know what your schedules are, but you guys do. And if somebody, I've got some feedback from a few of you already. I'd like for the rest of you to, you know, let me know your thoughts about times. I would like to have this finalized at least by the work session of November so that we can get it out and distributed to everyone and get the calendars, you know, to the media, out to the departments so that we'll be ready for January.
All right, very good. Yeah, we will get that information back to you and hopefully, we, when, when should we have all of this finalized by?
I would like to have it finalized by the November work session.
Okay, great. Yeah, yep, perfect. So that'll give us about a month. And I will say, thanks for mentioning the the WIS meeting. So that has kicked off. I was thoroughly impressed. That was a good experience today. I was there with Kim and our HR representative and the WIS representative and Councilmember Wiltz was there with us as well, too. So I think this is going to be a great, a great project. And they seem very eager to to be working with our department. So it was so nice to see her as everyone was dressed up, had ties on and everything. It kind of inspired me to, I went and changed out of my sweatshirt and put a jacket on after that. So it kind of makes me feel like when I went, when I was actually working in an office. So nice, nice to be reminded of that. At any rate, any other questions or or council comments before we call it a night? All right, well, we are adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you next time.
Thank you all.